Position survey, only 164 hospitals ranked in at least one of these specialties. So we were very pleased and honored in Kingsport at Holston Valley and Indian Path to be recognized for a number of these awards, which are in greater detail on page four and five of your packet. I will say that it was quite the honor for Holston Valley Medical Center to be ranked number nine in the state of Tennessee out of the 176 hospitals that we have across the state. So quite the honor and privilege for our team and providers at Holston Valley. And also, we were ranked as the best regional hospital across all of northeast Tennessee and southwest Virginia. So again, quite the honor for our team and the quality of care that they provide. Specifically for those categories that we were performing high end is for chronic obstructive pulmonary disease, colon cancer surgery, heart attacks, heart failure, kidney failure, knee replacement, stroke, and transcatheter aortic valve replacement, or otherwise known as TAVR, which I'll speak to as I go into my presentation. Also, for Indian Path Community Hospital, they were awarded as a high-performing hospital for pneumonia and their ability to discharge patients in a timely manner with the appropriate resources post-discharge as well. So really, really pleased with these quality initiatives that we've experienced and have been rewarded for in Kingsport. Also, wanted to give an update on the investment in our people, our most valuable resources, which are our clinicians and our team members that work with us each day. So across Valid Health, we were able to have adjustments in salaries over the past year of nearly $120 million in wage adjustments for all categories of our team and a pay increase of 4% this fiscal year. While that may sound like a lot, that does cover over 16,000 team members and providers in addition to that across our region. We've also had significant adjustments to our hiring rate for nurses. So certainly, as we know and as you're very well aware of the nursing shortage that we are under until what is projected as a country until at least 2035, we realize that in order to recruit and retain the best in the profession, that we must have the resources financially available to ensure that their needs are met, working professionally in those designations with us. So I'd also like to highlight as we continue over specifically into Holston Valley and on page nine of your slide deck, we've made some significant adjustments to our flow and throughput for our patients presenting either through our back door via EMS or through the front door and lobby. And as many of you know and have experienced maybe as yourself or family or loved ones, we've had some significant wait times in the past six to 12 months. Those have stabilized somewhat unless we are having peaks in our volume, but COVID has certainly turned around what we are doing in healthcare. And I wish I could say it were to a positive, but unfortunately, in what we've experienced in the turnover rates for all clinicians across the profession of healthcare, it's been significantly challenging for us to maintain the resources that are necessary sometimes for that throughput to be as timely as it is. Certainly should have no impact and does not on the acuity of our patients. So those who are presenting to us in that critical state specifically requiring ICU or higher level of care, those are obviously prioritized as the ones that need the most urgent need, meet the most urgent needs and criteria for the assessment and workup. But I will share with you that a couple of new processes we have implemented and remain focused on specifically as it relates to EMS, which I know that is critically important to you as county commissioners and the agency that supports us in our community with Sullivan County. And we are committed to our offload times of 20 minutes or less. We have been able to sustain at 85 to 90% of that since we met with the team and with our EMS officials in September. We have had a couple of weeks that were outliers around the holiday season, which was attributed to higher peaks in volume as well as our staffing and situations that were unavoidable for us due to illness of our own team members. However, we are sustaining at that every week, over week of about 85%. So that's been a huge initiative for us that we're working on and how those patients are safely offloaded so that those trucks can get back into the communities that they serve. We've also implemented what you might have heard or become familiar with as a results waiting process. That is a process through our emergency department, through triage and through the assessment of our clinicians that assures that patient's workup begins immediately within minutes of arrival regardless of diagnosis or acuity. And then at that point, that patient's care is prioritized as far as any additional tests or exams that might be needed. And that's been a significant improvement to us and one that we're continuing to improve upon each day. We've also had an increased focus on having our team dedicated in the fast-track area. If you're familiar with Holston Valley, you know that the ER is quite large. It has a footprint of 54 beds that can accommodate as far as space. And we have a fast-track area that's designated with up to 10 beds where we can assure that patients who are there with minor illness or things that are less critical can be maintained in that area with focus on driving that throughput and ensuring that they are treated and discharged in a timely manner, not into that flow of our more acute care patients. So if you'd like to turn to page 10, one of the most recent advancements in technology that we have implemented across Holston, across the city is that Holston Valley and our MRI, our imaging department, we now have the latest technology with a 3T MRI that also is a large board to accommodate for various patient sizes and is the latest technology that's available for imaging. So we're pleased with that. We've had that in place now almost a year since March of '22. One of the benefits that we've seen too is just the more complex cases that we're able to review and specific to certain organs of the body that we've not been able to have as clear imaging previously. So lots of great feedback from not only our patients, but specifically our providers and those that refer in that need those imaging studies. I'd also like to speak for a moment about robotics in Kingsport. So we are now pleased to have three of the DaVinci robots, which you may have heard that were implemented across our system. We had five recently that we've shared on social. Three of those are now in Kingsport. We have two at Holston Valley and one at Indian Path. Since we've implemented at Holston Valley, we've done 58 additional procedures on the second robot. So we're very pleased with that and we have some of the more advanced technology that we are looking at in complementing general surgery with colorectal surgery as well as bariatrics. We've also now performed 14 cases at Indian Path primarily with general surgery. So we're looking to further advance that with gynecology and oncology as well as urology. And one of the more recent partnerships that we've worked on cultivating over the past year with Dobbin's Bennett High School is a work-based curriculum track so that the students can access our facilities prior to graduation and have more thoughtful exposure to what it is they might want to do as they pursue their careers. We're also working on that with our Sullivan County school partners as well. And then just some new orthopedic offerings. We do have Dr. Corden, who is with Associated Orthopedics that is performing the anterior total hip. So that is fairly new to our region as well. Previously, our patients have traveled to Knoxville or Asheville to have that procedure performed. It's a much smaller incision and a much shorter recovery time for total hip replacements. And Dr. Potter, one of our new pediatrists with Associated Orthopedics, is also now performing total ankle procedures, which is brand new for our Kingsport market. And recently onboarded, Dr. Parker Duncan, who is a legacy provider with Watawa Orthopedics, who is really seeing quite the boost in with his orthopedic volumes at Holston Valley. So really pleased with that. If you'll turn to the next page, the next few slides, we're really going to highlight some of our team members. Just wanted to share with you through our robotics program, Dr. Andrew Kramer is one of our general surgeons in Kingsport who also specializes in bariatrics. He recently completed his 500th case at Holston Valley in robotics alone and is the first and only surgeon in our region who is performing robotic bariatric surgeries. And so that is for gastric sleeve and bypass. Tremendous results and outcomes. The patients are going home the same day and really seeing a great improvement in not just the procedural setting, but their overall health and what it means for them on a long-term perspective. And then just on the next page, you'll see a couple of our team members we're very proud of at Indian Path as they brought up the robotics there and that program. In very quick turnaround time, they were able to achieve their certifications and be competently trained in all aspects of robotics in that facility. So that was, that was really a huge win for Indian Path too, which I'll talk more about in just a moment. Just wanted to include a picture. You might have heard of our MAKO. Our MAKO is the latest technology in orthopedic surgery from a robotics perspective. So you'll see what that machine and device looks like. We're, all of our tertiary facilities within Valid perform MAKO procedures and it's really what, what most would identify with is a very personal and specific knee replacement. So with 3D CT-based scanning, we're able to be very precise in how the joint is placed and patients have much more longevity and the outcomes with their total knee replacement. And I'll speak just briefly before going into Indian Path. As many of you know, Holston Valley for years and decades has been known as a cardiac center of excellence. And in 2020, we were recognized as a top 50 cardiac hospital in the United States. We are very proud of that. We are working to grow and continue expanding our cardiac program at Holston Valley. That's really the lynchpin for all of what Kingsport has been known for previously in the cardiac world with some of the more advanced procedures, not just locally, but nationally and internationally with the procedures that Dr. Chris Metzger performs with the live links that we do across the world. Really is very impressive to know that we have that right here in our region. But I wanted to just highlight too, another advancement that we have that is unique to Holston Valley and one of a kind from Knoxville to Roanoke. Actually, I'm not sure that Knoxville has fully stood this up yet, but heart flow. So if you hear the term heart flow, that is essentially cardiac CT that addresses the assessment of the heart, whereas normally you would have an invasive cardiac cath procedure. So this advancement in technology and the platform that we have that our cardiologists are able to connect with our radiology team and evaluate the blood flow and all of the vessel work inside the heart the same as they would with an invasive cardiac cath. So we're really excited about that. That eliminates the need for invasive procedures and really identifies those patients who need intervention in a more timely manner. And then as I spoke earlier about the TAVRs, we have just, we're halfway to our 800th case now. Just over the summer, we completed our 700th TAVR. That is really a phenomenal win for us in our community, something that we're very proud of and again, looking to expand that program even further in addition to our electrophysiology cardiac program as well. So I will go into Indian Path now and we'll try to wrap this up very quickly as I know I'm probably approaching, if not already past, my time. But I just wanted to share with you that many of you may recall, at the onset of COVID in April of 2020, we did consolidate our birthing centers across the city into Indian Path. That was part of our strategy and our plan that was presented by our Kingsport Visioning Committee, the visioning committee that was formed at the merger. And as a result of COVID, we actually sped that process up. And we are now at that point in time where renovations started last week on the new birthing center for Kingsport. So it is an $8 million renovation and expansion that Valid and the Nice Longer Children's Network were certainly aware of the need in Kingsport and for our moms and babies to have a center of excellence and one that we could all be proud of. So as you will see in our packet that I've put together, there are 12 rooms that will be for labor and delivery, recovery and postpartum, which is a new model and concept for Indian Path. We'll have five additional patient rooms, two triage rooms and an updated nursery. And then some other areas that will also be renovated as a result. So there are some very nice pictures that you will see if you've been to the Indian Path Birthing Center. It's a very nice center as it is, but it is dated as the last update occurred in the early to mid 90s. So this was well overdue and something that I know in the feedback we have received from our community and the heart of the visioning committee was to see this through. And so we're real excited and anticipate that construction to end within the next six to nine months. And also, as one of the accolades for Indian Path, you may recall recently, a couple of you were at our ribbon cutting that we had for the pediatric ED. We are really pleased with the results of that and the volume has grown tremendously above and beyond what we anticipated. We understand that with the incredible viral and respiratory illness season that we've had, some of that was to be expected just with the time of year. But to date, well, actually in November and now to date, it's well over, it's approaching 1,000 patients that we've seen in that pediatric emergency department. So 1,000 of our babies and children here locally in Kingsport have been treated in a state-of-the-art setting. If you've not been by there, I really encourage you to take a look, stop in and see just what we're offering in Kingsport. It's really quite, quite nice and certainly deserving for our community, our children. So we do, we do like to say that on the Indian Path campus, it truly is completing the entire life cycle. So the first in our region and certainly for our system, we had the grand opening and ribbon cutting and launch of our Center for Healthy Aging. This was another initiative that was brought to us by our Kingsport Visioning Committee as we were looking for the niche services and the rebirth of Kingsport through the merger and transition. And so this is a center that is highly specialized with gerontology care for our aging population of 65 and over. We do have a phase two of that that we've just started. That is there on the Indian Path campus as well. So much of what we've done for the pediatric emergency department, we're covering, we are carving out two rooms in the emergency department that will be specialized for geriatric care. So for our patients who present 65 and above that are in these certain categories and disease processes, there will be rooms that are optimized to minimize their, the direct lighting, the transitions from floor to wall, things that will be more minimal to their care and certainly more safe for them as they're in a hospital setting. And then lastly, I will wrap up with again, the first and only in the region, our Center for Post-COVID Care. This is something that we worked with Vanderbilt and other institutions across the country to formulate what this would look like for our region. So patients who have suffered with the long hauler syndrome from COVID or who are quite or not quite recovering as they should or would like to, this is a very comprehensive approach from a physiatrie-based model, physicians who practice in Kingsport with spine and rehab and a physiatrie-based complement of services to assure that the additional rehab needs and consults for those patients are met, not just from a pulmonary perspective, which is what we tend to think about, but the connectivity with the temporary memory loss, the cognitive issues, the sustainability for their vascular cardiac processes. So this has been certainly detrimental for us and we are looking toward expansion of that in the future to cover for other viral illnesses or those patients who have had extended stays in an ICU setting that can have same or similar effects as long haulers COVID. So that completes my presentation for tonight and would entertain any questions or any other additional points for clarification.
If anyone has a question, would you please push your button? I'll recognize you. Commissioner Harvey, you're recognized. Commissioner Harvey?
Yes, I'd like to ask if there are any plans to bring a NICU back to Sullivan County?
So we do have the nursery and the features that are in place at Indian Path, but as far as we are aware at this point, there's no discussion for a NICU in Kingsport or Bristol.
Thank you. Commissioner Magr, you're recognized.
I'm sorry for coming in late, but I think I called, came in and I heard you talking about the approximate wait time as far as offloading from EMS. What is the approximate wait time for a patient that, let's say they just present with like some chest pains coming into the ER? What's the approximate wait time at our hospitals as far as getting a bed or getting a room?
And, and that varies. It varies by day and by shift and depending upon the acuity of the patient as well as the flow of the departments where they might be going for admission. But for the patient to come in with chest pain, there's an immediate protocol and the EKG is expected to be completed upon arrival within, I think it's less than 20 minutes that the EKG is completed, the labs and so forth to start the workup and determine if it is active MI or other chest pain related issues.
Can I follow up?
Sure, Joe.
So an EKG would be done, but are they actually, are they actually given a bed? Are they given a hospital room?
So it would be part of the workup in the emergency department. I didn't mean to cut you off, but they would stay in the emergency department through the duration of that workup. And then if it were ST elevated MI or anything that required potential intervention, they go immediately to our cath lab before they would go to a room.
Commissioner Ward, you're recognized.
Thank you. Thank you for being here tonight. Unfortunately, I've experienced, I've firsthand experience of your robotics. My grandkids were born in your hospital. One thing I didn't hear you mention was anything about a trauma center. I know it's been moved to Johnson City over in Washington County. Any chance of that getting back over this way? Seems like an awful long path for somebody in a trauma situation. I've witnessed in law enforcement, a bad wreck on 81 and we're looking at Bristol Regional Hospital, but we're waiting for Med Flight to come fly on to Johnson City. So I'm a little concerned about just not having a trauma center in this area in Sullivan County. Thank you.
So both Bristol and Holston Valley are designated as Level 3 trauma centers, which falls within our trauma network. Johnson City as the Level 1. The primary difference is we still have the ability to care for traumas to a certain level and degree at both Holston Valley and Bristol. And for the most part, we care for a great deal of those. Really in looking at our transfer rates, we transfer only seven to nine percent of what comes to our facility in Kingsport onto Johnson City. So Johnson City specifically specializes though in those patients who have multi-system traumas. So for that patient who might have multiple fractures in addition to a head bleed or significant organ interference or laceration. So if it is multiple systems that are affected, those are those that we consider as alpha-designated traumas that go into the Level 1.
Thank you. Any other questions for our guests? Ms. Beck, I'm going to repeat what I told you privately back there. I also, I had an opportunity to use the ER services about two weeks ago and my wife had fallen and broken her wrist and it was a complicated issue. But she was in considerable pain because of the complications of a steel plate previously been in the wrist. And I just want to compliment your staff. They were more caring and more efficient than anything I've seen. And so please pass on my personal thanks to them in the ER. And I know folks have had some weights and I know you operate with the, with the army you have and not the army you wish you had. So we think, I think you do a great job with what you have to work with. We appreciate you being here tonight.
Thank you. It was my pleasure. Thank you.
Thank you. And I would be remiss if I didn't introduce her escort tonight, who is Stephen Sebastian, who is known to a lot of you here. And Stephen serves as a consultant to Valid in some capacity. And I'm not sure what that is, but when I've got a valid, valid question, I call Stephen. So again, thank you Rebecca for being here. Being our work session, we have, we have a full agenda before us, but we have some items on that agenda that are handled when we are in regular sessions. So elections and confirmations, we will skip approval of commission minutes, we will skip approval of noted republics. And that brings us down to our public comment. So Mr. Cross, if you will share the informal public comments issue we have tonight, we'll be happy to hear from our constituents. Thank you, Andrew. Okay, I'll call these and I would remind our guests that our normal procedure is to allow you approximately three minutes. If you go over some, we don't get your fit. We try to accommodate you and let you finish your thought. And so first up is Mike Wiglund. Is that, is that the right pronunciation of your name, Mike? I butcher names, I'm not.
That's okay.
Very good. Thank you. If you'll give us your name and address for our electronic record, Mike.
Mike Wigand, 13534 St. Creek Road, Bristol, Virginia. I'm here on behalf of Observation Park. There was an incident that happened and I don't think the full story or the truth has been brought out on it. Chris, which is over at Observation Park, he has backed into my vehicle and the county has paid for it, but nobody knows who or why or how it got paid for. He said a golf cart hit it, which never happened. He was chasing a golf cart that he thought was stolen and trying to play security in the county vehicle. It was a brand new F-250 truck. And I have the check that was written and everything through them, but I think for most of it, Observation Park is a good park, but I don't think it's being led right. You take somebody as Chris himself does the best he can, if he's never ran a park like that, then it's not going to continue to run. All it's going to do is go downhill and that's what it's done. We, you know, we've got people here such as them and their kids come out and play in this park. We're not even allowed to throw water balloons in this park anymore because for the simple fact is it leaves a mess. Well, these, these people, they picked their mess up and Chris just plums us, no, we're not going to do that no more. Tells people they got to move out for no reason whatsoever and blames conditions of the park on the campers. You use your electricity and you plug your camper in, but if the electricity or the boxes aren't up to date, how is that our fault? I have a camper there myself. And if I pull my camper out for any amount of time, it's not going to go back in. And there's plenty more people to back me up on that, but we're not trying to run this park now. We're trying to build it up. We're trying to let people have fun and enjoy their vacation, enjoy their time there. But it's turned into a complete disaster since this guy's took over. I just wanted to make you aware of that.
Thank you. You made clever remarks. You've got some more time, but we appreciate you being here and we appreciate your opinion.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, next up is Rebecca Bobrowski?
Bobrowski.
Bobrowski. I mispronounce her name every time I introduce you.
It's okay. Don't you say Rebecca, it's okay. Rebecca Bobrowski, 248 Chris's Drive, Love City. I was, I was supposed to say something to Mr. Jones, but Mr. Jones isn't here tonight. But last meeting, he said that the electrical was our fault. No, it's not our fault. And at the beginning of the year, Chris came by, walked all the way around my camper, inspected my camper. There was no problem with my electrical then. Now all of a sudden, I'm the cause of all of it. I don't understand. When was the last time there was an inspection out there? I've been there 12 years. I don't remember an electrical inspection out there. Now all of a sudden, with all this going on, there's electrical inspection. It's not our fault. I mean, if my breaker box, my side door's open, my breaker box, then maybe the breaker box needs to be moved down some or something. You know, why is it all our fault? It's not. I think everything needs to be looked at, you know, for the person who's out there. Another reason, he hasn't been there. I don't know if you know this or not, whoever, but Chris hasn't been there for weeks. We've had people call up to speak to him. We'll call back on Wednesday. He'll be back on Wednesday. He's not there. So as me being a Sullivan County resident, are we paying his salary for him not being there? So question, I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you. Generally, if, as we have our public comment section, if someone wanted to address the commission and failed to sign up, we always try to accommodate you at this point in time. And so I will ask if there's anyone in the And so I will ask if there's anyone in the audience that maybe didn't get signed up that would like to address the commission for whatever reason you might choose. Anyone? Seeing none, public comment section is closed. We will skip amendments to zoning plan. We'll do that next Thursday. And the consent agenda, so we'll go right into our resolution agenda. And as you look at your agenda, you will see that you did your work very well under Chairman Protim, Governor. So you have no old business. Everything before us tonight will be new business. And say as much or as little as you'd like, if you want to move on to, to regular commission meetings. So first up, Resolution Number One, Commissioner Crossby. You're recognized on item number. I'm sorry, I have skipped one. As I said, I might be retrained. Mr. Gardner, you're recognized on item number two.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number two simply authorizes the mayor to apply for a block grant in the amount of $500,000 for the 2023 Food Insecurity Block Grant. Resolution simply allows the mayor to formally submit the application. Funds can be used to assist food pantries and other organizations in purchasing equipment, vehicles and other equipment such that these agencies can assist those with food needs in Sullivan County. There's no locally money, no local money involved. If there's no objection, I'd like to ask item number two be placed on consent calendar.
The Commissioner Gardner requests consent calendar. Is there objection to consent calendar? And if not now, I would remind you, any time between now and when that's heard, next week, you can approach the chair and we will move anything you put on consent over the regular calendar. So if in the meantime, you come up with questions that you need to be answered, if you can't get those answered by the sponsor to your satisfaction, you can bump it off and we'll go to regular calendar. Okay, now, Mr. Crossby, I was just so anxious to get to this resolution. You're recognized.
Thank you so much, Mayor. This is a grant. There's no matching money. It looks like the county would have to be paying $16,840, but we will not. We're taking last year's, or pardon me, last year's $7,000 out of this fund for the historical buildings. And then we will take this year's $10,000. So we will have altogether $42,100. And this is going to be for our Anderson Townhouse to renovate it. It's the event over there, that's the Ralph Blizzard Museum. It's wonderful. The camera music session's going on there Friday night. We need to take care of these buildings. So I would love to have this on consent and let's get this going.
Sponsor request to consent calendars. Are there objections? Seeing none, we'll hear it on consent next Thursday night. Thank you, Commissioner. Item number four, Commissioner Gardner, you're up again.
Mayor, would it be appropriate for me to present items number four and number five together? They, they both came out of the same committee and they accomplished the same purpose.
Without objection, Commissioner Jones is not here. Without objection, we'll have the four and five together.
Item, item number four is a delinquent, is a delinquent tax property. The amount owed was $11,300. And a bid of $5,000 came in and the delinquent tax committee approved that. Item number five, same scenario. The amount of $3,600 was owed on property. And we received a bid of $2,000 and the delinquent tax committee approved that as well. If there's no objection to items number four and five being placed on the consent calendar, I move items number four and five be placed on consent calendar.
Sponsor request, consent calendar on items four and five. An objection? No objection. Items number four and five are on consent. Next up, item number six, Commissioner Iverson. You're recognized on item number six.
Yes, Mayor. Actually, I'm going to do the same thing if, if you'll allow me. Item six, eight, nine, 10, 11 and 12 are all the same thing. It's all flow-through money. I'd like to put those together and press them all once up. That'd be okay.
I bet there's a lot of spouses in all of them. I appreciate that. So without objection, item six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11 and 12 will be heard.
So all six of these are accepting of grants. It has no additional matching funds. It has no county money to it. They're all accepting grants from different sources. The only thing I would like to add is that there were two commissioners that should be on here as far as cosponsors, and one was Commissioner Harvey and Commissioner Calton. If we could add those as cosponsors, but all of these I would like to put on the consent agenda. All of these I would like to put on the consent agenda.
Sponsor's request to consent calendars on that. Let me make sure I'm not skipped. Did I skip you, Gary? I did.
No, so I just, I jumped ahead of him. So since I jumped over those other ones, it actually left Gary's folder.
You had it, Commissioner. Item 19, 11, 12. Without objection, consent calendar. Gary, I apologize. I'm getting used to John's calendar and it's just a little bit different. You can't teach old dog new tricks. You're recognized on item number seven.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is authorized temporary funding, not to exceed $30,000. I'll set the completion cost of the Veterans Memorial here in Sullivan County at the Military Park. We do have Director Johnson with us tonight that deals with this every day and can answer all the detailed questions of why this is necessary. Glad to come out, Mr. Chairman.
We will reach out to your archives.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Pleasure to be here tonight. Here on behalf of the Military Park Board. And we're looking to complete the Veterans Park right behind the Business Center, Old Sheriff's Home. And what we're asking for is a temporary funding, not to exceed $30,000. And that can be paid back after we receive our private donation to one of our donors. But it's really just a cash flow issue with this.
Thank you, Angie. I thought it was just me.
Sorry about that. Again, I'm here on behalf of the Military Park Board. And we are obviously, as you're aware, the creation of a Veterans Park behind the Business Center at the Old Sheriff's Home. What we're asking for is a temporary funding of $30,000 to get us over the hump to complete the park. Once we receive a private donation, we will then pay the county back for those dollars. It's really just a cash flow issue and timing is what we're running into. But that's where we're at and that's what we're asking for. And if you have any questions, we'd be glad to answer those.
You might have any questions, Matthew. Seeing none. Thank you, Matthew. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mr. Sponsor?
I'd like to put this on consent.
Without, any objection to consent?
Actually, I would like to talk about that, not a consent.
Yeah, we could.
I would like to not consent.
Okay, during commission meeting. During commission meeting, and we will formally bump that to consent. We'll put that on the ballot. Okay, next up, if I can count correctly, item number 13, Commissioner Locke. Sponsor by Commissioner Gardner.
This resolution here is for Sullivan County MS Station Eight to install 700 amp breakers to 400 amp in the generator. When the station got built, we moved the generator from Health Department to Station Eight and we never did hook that up. We didn't even plan on having a generator there. And when we got a grant for a new generator at the Health Department on Sullivan Street, we moved that generator to Station Eight. So in order for it to work, we've got to have updated breakers within that station so that station can operate if the power should go out and the generator kick on. So it's for $15,445, come out of the general fund. And I asked to waive the rules on this. This price will go up if we don't move on it within the first quarter of this year. The attached quote is from Acorn Electric and it's on the back page. Don't know why the date states November 2021, but this is an updated new quote that was sent to me last week.
You've heard the explanation. Any questions, sponsor? Now, if you've informed you, he's going to ask to waive the rules. So if you have, if you have questions for the son or the intervening wake-up, please get to him because we will need to, it will require 16 votes for Patrick, so. Seeing no questions, without objection, on to Thursday night. That completes our resolution.
I have one more resolution that I have hand filed tonight.
Okay, I didn't realize that, Joe, if you'll push your button, it was filed tonight?
Yes, sir.
I will recognize you. You're recognized, Mr. Crossby.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a resolution to go ahead with a memoratorium on reselling properties near the South Fork and Holston River pending a study by planning on zoning. And I would request waiver of rules on this.
You've heard the explanation. Any questions for a sponsor or Mr. Carter? We will have that on the regular, regular calendar on Thursday night. Thank you. Now, I think that completes the agenda in case somebody has a better idea. Before we go on, and I meant to make this comment earlier on the Military Park. As I go in after lunch at various meetings I've had to go to, I see various people over there working like ants on that park. And the work that they've done on the Military Park, Scott, I want to thank you for it personally. I know, and your people are putting their hearts into it. I don't know if they're veterans or not, but they certainly appreciate our veterans. So thank you for the work you're doing over there. I don't have any announcements. Anybody have any announcements that might be appropriate before our next meeting? Well, again, apologize for missing a couple of meetings. Family Matters come first and I hope, and I know that you feel that too. Thank you for giving me for, for missing. So we'll talk to you next Thursday night. We are.